We're going to call the meeting to order. Declaration of Acquara, seven members present. Welcome to the meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Recognitions, Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, members of the board, members of the community. We'll begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings with a pledges of allegiance to the American flag, Texas flag, and a moment of silence. So we have students to lead us through this process this evening, and we have students from Cypress Grove Intermediate School and College Station Middle School. I'd like to invite the principals from those two schools, Holly Scott from Cypress Grove and Oliver Hadnot from College Station Middle School, to come up and introduce your students.
Well, I've got two of College Station Middle School finals here, and we're going to break traditional a bit, and we're going to allow them to introduce themselves tonight. Come on up, guys.
Hey, y'all. I'm so glad for the opportunity to be a part of this meeting. My name is Finian Coyle, and I'm a proud student over at College Station Middle School. A little bit about me, my family, and I moved here a little bit more than a year ago from Indianapolis, Indiana, and really, I've enjoyed it greatly so far. Texas is a great place besides the heat. So you can get to know me a little bit better. I'll tell you an interest or two of mine. So I love art. That's me. That's who I am, really. It's a great, perfect way to express my creativity and like let all of my feelings out, really. And this is great because my aspirations include, when I grow up, I want to be like a freelance artist. And so ideally, I would be working on commissions as like my work in the adult world, and I think that's what defines me best, probably. So that's me.
All right. (applause).
I'm not that tall at all.
There you go.
My name's Naomi Bonidi. I really like to read and sing. I don't really do anything. But when I grow up, I want to be a politician so I can help other people in the community as best as I can.
Ms. Parker, you probably know who this lady is. Her mom works for you.
Ebony.
Hi, I'm Holly Scott, principal at Cypress Grove, and I'm going to let my students introduce themselves as well.
Hi, my name is Cadence Purdue. I am 10 years old and a fifth grader at Cypress Grove. In addition to being in student council, I am also involved in art club.
Hi, my name is Clayton Brode. I'm 11 years old. I'm a sixth grader at Cypress Grove, and in addition to being in student council, I'm also black belt in taekwondo, and I play the violin for the school orchestra.
You're speaking on the mic.
I pledge allegiance. Oh, please stand for our pledge allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Take a picture with the board of trustees right there.
Picture of you guys.
I would like for everybody to recognize artwork provided by South Knoll Elementary School, Southwood Valley Elementary School, Cypress Grove Intermediate, College Station Middle School, Wilburn Middle School, and the holiday cards selected by campuses and the district departments. Looking at the cards, very, very much talented. Item D, consent agenda, is there anything that anybody would like to?
Go ahead.
Okay. The items that are on consent item is G, H2, J2, J3, J4, J5, and J6. Is there anything anybody would like to have removed? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as president.
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item E1, the board directions and reports announcements, superintendent's reports announcements, Dr. Ely. Would you like to?
Does any board members have any reports?
I can start. I have one. I got to attend the Head Start Policy Council meeting last week. Glad to be back on that council because it's such a great involved group where you see the staff of the district but also parents of the families in the Head Start programs, very involved and engaged about the program. We approved, or at least the council did the first step of approving, the 2020-2021 budget, so ways out there. And the other thing, I guess, they presented the enrollment numbers, 221 in Head Start and 70 in early Head Start, and just as there has been for a while, there are also waiting lists for both of those programs, which is good and a bad thing. And then the other thing we talked about some was attendance, that we looked over the attendance numbers. Head Start was slightly lower than the rest of the elementary schools, but they had a great discussion about, you know, some strategies to try to work on that and improve it. That's it.
Dr. Ely, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, members of the board. Upcoming events, just want to mention that we've got some pretty big holidays coming up in the next couple of weeks. The last day of school this week will be the 19th on Thursday. It'll be early release for our students, who will be released at 12:45 or 1:30, depending on the school that they attend. Staff come back after the first of the year on Monday, the 6th, and students return on Wednesday, the 8th. We hope that everybody has a safe, and joyous, and restful holiday season over the break and comes back ready to learn and ready to get after it. Just on a personal note, just a couple of upcoming event items for me, as the board and most of the community are aware, last Thursday, the 12th, I was named lone finalist to be the next superintendent in Church Siblo Universal City ISD. Just timeline for the community, where we are with that, the board and Church Siblo would vote to hire me on the 7th of January, and then the board will be coming together in that time to determine what the next steps and processes are for the selection of the next superintendent. But just wanted to, this is not the time to say goodbye. I still have, I'll probably be here another couple of months, so we'll have some time for that later, but I just wanted to make sure everybody in the community knew what was going on, and the boards looking at options will finalize the process they want to use once everything's finalized with me and Church Siblo. With that, Mr. Schaefer, that ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ely. We'll move to item F, hearing of citizens. We have any cards?
I do not.
Move to item H1, receive report related to CSISD results coaching. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, members of the board. As you're aware, we come to you three times in the fall and three times in the spring to give you reports on district programs and those that are impacting the classrooms and student performance. So we're happy to be able to speak with you this evening about the CSISD Results Coaching Initiative. Dr. Penny Trammell, our chief academic officer, will talk about the program, the process that we've used, and the results that we're seeing in our classrooms. So with that, Dr. Trammell.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here this evening to share an update with you about our results coaching program in College Station ISD. We have been on quite the journey in College Station for a little over 10 years, working on developing coaching, trying to get a system going in our district, learned key phrases like "so what I hear you saying is," just clarifying kind of phrases, did some things with art and coaching. In 2017, we realized that we really weren't speaking the same language. We didn't have a common definition of coaching. We did not have a common purpose and focus with coaching. So we brought in results coaching and trained all the principals and the CNI team, came to a common definition and understanding about the power of coaching. And as a result of that, the principals agreed to, at the elementary level, give up one of their three interventionists to be a full-time coach, and at the intermediate and middle school level, they agreed to make their specialist a halftime interventionist and a halftime coach. And that is how strongly they believed in the power of coaching. The high school principals would have loved to have given up someone to be a coach, but they did not have anyone to give up. So in 2018, we trained the assistant principals and the new principals we had hired, and then the elementary principals and the 5'8" principals came up with a new job description for the coaches. They came up with interview questions, and we posted that position. And so coaches were specifically selected with certain criteria for the coaching position at each campus. We have had very good success with that. We implemented our official coaching model this fall. I have to say that Teresa Cot is a leader of leaders. Our elementary program is thriving with her leadership. She and I work with the elementary coaches, and then Jeff Mann and I work with the secondary coaches. And it's really exciting and fun to see them grow and develop their skills along the way. We have been working with them on deepening their understanding in two main areas this year. One, the four types of unproductive listening. So in coaching, judgment and criticism are not the type of listening you want to do, autobiographical, inquisitive, solution listening. If you were doing any of these things, you're not really listening. You're not focused on the person. And then the three types of paraphrasing, the "so what I hear you saying is," obviously acknowledge or acknowledge and clarify, but there are two other levels that are a little bit more sophisticated that are very appropriate to use as well. So these are the tools that our coaches are developing and growing in their skills with. This is our coaching model. It consists of three different areas, a planning, meeting, or conference, or conversation, usually around some goal or issue that the teacher is having. And then we kind of nail down success indicators within that issue or goal, so clarity on what does success look like. Then some kind of event, they may, the coach may go in and gather data for the teacher. It may be on the teacher behaviors, it may be on student learning, student behaviors, whatever fits the issue or goal. And then last, reflection, which the teacher gets her own data, the coach gives that to her, and they go through kind of just a reflective conversation and apply what the teacher has learned to future behavior of the teacher and classroom decisions. So we are seeing good success and getting good feedback from our coaches on that. You'll notice a little box up there that says meta-coaching. That is kind of our fidelity check and our way of monitoring our coaches and their development. What that looks like is if a coach is coaching a teacher, then Teresa, or I, or Jeff, one of us is sitting there and watching them coach. Right now, this first semester, we've just watched them coach one another, and we give them, I hate to use the word critical, but we give them very specific feedback on their skills. So they have set goals to grow, and that meta-coaching area is how they get feedback on their coaching to grow. We know there are great benefits to coaching, mainly it builds capacity, people grow through reflection, it's really working on a growth mindset, so you look for the good and you assume the positive. You don't practice that unproductive judgment and all of that. You assume positive intent with every conversation. That helps the person that you are having the conversation with feel valued and feel safe. This is an example of a much better coaching interchange than the first example that I gave. One of the trainers that trains us is Frances Schuster, and this is a quote that she gave in the very first level of coaching, and I think it's very, very true. A coach helps others discover the genius within themselves, and it's about building that efficacy and mindset of the teachers. So when we think about an interventionist versus a coach, and we think about an interventionist makes a difference with one child at a time. A coach coaching a teacher, if I think about that teacher, that teacher makes a difference with an entire class of kids. So if teachers are coached, then then an entire campus of kids are benefiting from that expertise and that growth of the teacher with her craftsmanship. So, you know, if you send your kid to an interventionist, it's subliminally, there's a message, "I can't meet your needs in my classroom. You don't fit the norm, the middle-of-the-road mainstream, so I need to send you to a specialist or an interventionist to meet your needs." Whereas with coaching, you get coached through that process, and you develop your craftsmanship so that you can meet those needs in the classroom, so that kids are continuously getting that conversation and rigor from their peers as they continue to learn on level. So with that, you may be wondering about what are our next steps? There is a Level 2 training. We are bringing that this spring, actually coming in, I believe it's January of 2020. We will be training the coaches first. We did ask the administrators to go through Level 1 because we felt like that would benefit all of them, and we needed to come to a common understanding of what coaching is and the power of coaching. We are saying that they can come voluntarily to Level 2, and we'll provide sessions for them on that. We do strongly encourage that because that's just a benefit of deepening their skills as they work with teachers and parents and students. So we see it as beneficial in their role as a leader on the campus as well. And then we'll continue developing coaching skills in our coaches and letting our principals practice those skills in meetings and refining our coaching system at the elementary level. Then later on in the spring, summer, and fall, we'll start looking at our intermediate middle school and start refining those coaching areas. We're getting some really good feedback from those coaches right now, and then just to kind of explore the possibility of coaching at our comprehensive high schools. I don't know what that is going to look like, but we want to explore that. So with that, are there any questions? Speechless.
I'll ask one. Sorry, I'm just a little slow. Just trying to think about what is driving the coaching, I guess, because you showed at the top that sometimes it's goals and sometimes it's issues. Just kind of curious, how much of the time is this based on like a whole elementary-wide goal that we're trying to achieve with our teachers, or is it more focusing on issues that are occurring?
I will say that coaches worked with teachers on their goal setting as related to the alternative assessment that some of our teachers are on or their T-test evaluation. They have to set goals, and so coaches are available to coach them and help them gather data on their progress towards meeting their goals, which usually involves something about growing in their craftsmanship to meet the needs of their kids or increasing their knowledge of teaching or strategies or something like that.
So it sounds like it's very targeted for a specific teacher's needs, then?
It is all about the teacher and specifically the teacher's craftsmanship and being able to meet the needs of diverse learners in the regular classroom. You know, a lot of people go and get a master's degree and, you know, to expand their repertoire of strategies and their craftsmanship, but we don't necessarily have to do that. We can do that in our own, in the district, but we need some facilitation of that. It's very difficult to self-reflect and always be accurate. It's helpful to have another set of eyes and someone else asking questions to facilitate thinking to grow and learn.
Thank you. Just trying to visualize it better, and of course, I am a big fan of some continuous improvement all the time, so that's great.
Just wanted to say that I think this is, I'm so glad to hear this. I think it's very important that we have this type of, not just kind of the hierarchical coaching, but there is, it sounds like it's also kind of peer-to-peer. I think that's really important. You can learn quite a bit. My question is, how are teachers selected to receive the coaching, or is it open to all teachers, or how did that process work?
It's open to all teachers. What we're finding is, like, some of our really strong teachers are jumping out there to be coached first. And then there are situations where the principal might meet with the coach and a teacher and say, "I would like for you guys to work on this." And so it just depends, and what we're seeing is just teachers are continuing to come on board as, I don't want to say the word gets out, but as they realize this is a safe way to learn, it's not evaluative at all, it's really just about them and their learning.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perry, that was a very good PowerPoint presentation. I think she might get the award tonight. But no, thank you for the presentation. We will move to item J1, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the annual financial and compliance report for the fiscal year ended August 31st, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. As the board is aware, one of their roles and responsibilities each year is to make sure, to audit the administration's overseeing of the finances of the school district. There's a couple of ways this could be accomplished. One could be through the hiring of an internal auditor. We choose to go a different route and hire an outside firm to come in and do a comprehensive annual financial report. For the last eight years, we've worked with a couple iterations of a company that is now Weaver, and we're excited to have Shelby Lackey, who's back with us, to present this year's fiscal year 2019 comprehensive annual financial audit. So with that, Shelby.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mike and Thad and Alan.
Is the green light on?
I'm short. Is it on?
Okay.
Can you hear me now? How about now? So I'd like to thank Thad and Mike and those in our group in that area, and more so every, you know, every little piece of that puzzle, you know, those campus secretaries, everybody that has a piece of that, all that information rolls up and makes their job easier, which in turn makes our job easier. So I'd like to thank everybody for that. It's not always as an auditor that we walk in the room and are greeted with compassion and thankful that we're there to help, so we thank you for that. Page three of the bound report is your independent auditor's report over the district's financial statements. We issued a clean opinion on the financial statements this year, as we have in the past. We did not see any material issues in those statements. Again, that's the highest level of assurance that you can receive. I'll flip you all over to page 17. Those couple of pages represent the district's government-wide financial statements, the statement of net position, and the statement of activities. You all see those one time a year. The main thing that I want to point out here is there are long-term assets and long-term liabilities in these statements, and when Mike and Thad talk to you about fund balance on a monthly basis, that is not the same measurement. They're measured very differently. One is a very long-term focus versus one being a very short-term focus. On page 20, you'll see the district's governmental funds balance sheet. Starting with the first column is the general fund, the general operating fund of the district. You can see you had 47.6 million in assets, mainly your cash investments and receivables, liabilities of 8.4 million, mainly your accrued wages, those that have been earned and need to be paid out to employees. You can see unavailable property taxes of 1.3 million, resulting in fund balance of 37.8 million. The debt service fund of the district is where you all set aside monies, property tax monies for the most part, to pay down your bonded debt. You can see 10.3 million in assets, again, your cash and investments, some property tax receivables, small accounts payable, and then unavailable property taxes of 416,000, resulting in restricted fund balance to the debt service fund of 9.9 million. The capital projects fund is where you put all your bond proceeds to make sure you're meeting those obligations to the bondholders that you had said that you'd commit those projects. You can see 14.7 million in assets, mainly cash, some payables out to vendors, resulting in restricted fund balance for capital projects of 13.3 million. Your total non-major column are those local, federal, and state grants that, for the most part, come in and out for the same period. If you were looking for your child nutrition fund or a different major grant application, you would see it there. Those are detailed in the back of the financial statements, if you want to see any of those Page 24.
Can I ask one quick question on the allowance for uncollected taxes?
Yes.
Between the general fund and the debt service fund, can you explain what the difference between those two would be?
So the difference is based on, so what the district does to calculate that allocation is, one, you assess a property tax rate, and so that amount of property taxes is recorded in the general fund and the debt service. And then on top of that, the district goes in and says, "On a rolling average of five years, what has been uncollected from your?" years, what has been uncollected from year to year?" And so that percentage is what is allocated as uncollectible as of a certain period.
Our maintenance and operation and our interest in sinking tax rates are different. So that's why you see different numbers.
On page 24, you can see the general fund's income of $130 million, mainly your property taxes and state revenue, expenditures of $127 million, mainly your instruction as you would expect, resulting in an increase in fund balance overall of $3.2 million. The debt service fund, again, had $34.5 million in revenues, mainly your property tax revenues and local revenue. You paid down your required debt payments and interest of $33.3 million, resulting in a slight increase in debt service as well. Capital projects funds earned some interest, and you paid out your contracts for capital outlays you would expect, resulting in a decrease of capital projects fund of $16.2 On page 27, you'll see the statement of net position for your proprietary funds. The district has business-type activities and internal funds there. Your business activities are things like your camp, sports camp, kids camp, things of that nature. And they are holding their own with a net position of $1.2 million. And the internal service fund is where you hold your information for workers' comp. Nothing real exciting there. You can see on page 28, the business types overall used a little bit of net position this year, and that fluctuates from year to year depending on how things go, depending on number of participants and the like. And your workers' comp is satisfied with a positive net position. The notes to the financial statements did not change significantly this year. We didn't, yes?
31. Is that right? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I thought you jumped ahead to the notes page on 31. I was just going to tell her. I'm sorry, you were still on the other page. I apologize.
No, I'm good. The notes to the financial statements did not change significantly. Over the next few pages, you'll see very detailed information on a lot of the numbers that are in the front of your exhibits, things like capital assets and long-term debt. If you wanted to look specifically, that's where you would look. There's multiple pages about your pension, allocated share in OPEB, as we've discussed in great length over the last couple of years. So nothing really new there was implemented. If you wanted to flip over to page 61, you'll see the district's budget versus actual for the general fund. You can see the district had anticipated revenues of $130 million at the final budget. You brought in $130.7 million, a slight increase in federal programs. You had anticipated in your final budget expending $133 million in expenditures. You actually spent $127 million, curbing some expenditures there, like we said, overall increasing fund balance by $3.2 million. As I say each year, my favorite page of the report is on page 99. I joked a little bit earlier with the audit committee that that's Mr. Watts' page. It's a good page. You can see there that it's an executive summary, basically. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, on the district's financial statements. We did see a slight weakness this year, which turned out to be in the district's benefit. When Thad came in this year, he looked at how the district was accruing its payroll at the end of the year and what expenditures belonged in this year versus last year. And there was a difference in method on how that was calculated. You all implemented a new procedure this year to make sure that that number was a lot more accurate than it had been in the past, and in doing so, moved some of those expenditures from the 2019 year back into the 2018 year. So overall, they have put things into place to make sure things are more accurate in the current year and going forward. You can see we did not see any significant deficiencies, nor any non-compliance that was material to the financial statements. Because you all expend 750 more in federal grants, you're required to have a single audit under uniform guidance. You can see there, we tested the special education cluster, and we did not see any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies there, and we issued an unmodified opinion as well. I'd entertain any questions anybody might have.
I did like the fact that the fund balance increased over $3 million. That's not what we were expecting this year, so that's really great news.
Part of that was the movement of expenditures from this year to last year, but you did overall still increase fund balance this year as you intended.
This is an action item?
This is an action item.
Do I hear a motion? We'd be looking for approval of the annual financial audit is actually what we're looking for.
I'll move to approve the annual financial and compliance report.
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you. You'll have a happy holiday.
You too.
L1.
Yep.
We're going to move to L1. So the government students really did good tonight. It's less than 40 minutes. The board will meet an executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters close meeting exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code.
After conclusion of the executive session, we'll come back into open session. We do not anticipate any action at that time.
We are back in from executive session. It is 8:35, and the meeting's adjourned.